Ruby? He doesn't get a sound when he chipped. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'm dying. I plugged it in all day and I guess it wasn't really plugged in.
Let's hope they're not missing.
Oh, I think we're wide open.
Okay.
All right. I've got juice. Okay. All right, y'all ready? Stand or stand. Mr. Donaldson.
Stand.
I'll be glad to. Are you ready? You're ready? Welcome and good evening. It is 6:01 and I would like to bring this January 28, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting to order. Ms. Bevan, we have a quorum this evening. While you're here, if you please double check your phone and make sure that it is on vibrate or turned off so that we are not disturbed, it would be very much appreciated while we conduct city business. With that, I would like to ask Councilman Donaldson for the invocation. If we'd all please rise.
I was reminded today in Proverbs, Chapter 2, that says in my version, "When there is moral rot within a nation, its government topples easily." But wise and knowledgeable leaders bring stability. So Father, I thank you tonight that here at Montgomery, in our city business, Father, we have wise and knowledgeable leaders, Father, and we're here to do what's right, not only on your side, but what will benefit the citizens of this city. Father, we thank you for this opportunity. We thank you, Father, that our decisions will be made with wise and knowledgeable information. We thank you for that in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. All right, the Pledge of Allegiance, United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I received one request to speak during the public forum, and that is from Ms. Cheryl Fox. If you, since you are up here already, don't, you don't have to go down there, but if you would, go ahead. And you're allowed to speak.
Okay. What I'm speaking about is that there's a piece of property that's for sale on 149 at the corner of Caroline, and it sits adjacent to, actually to the Law Office, which is a historical place here in town. And I am asking that we have, hopefully, everyone will be on board about that, the city, not necessarily the city, but economic development by that piece of property. So, because we have a plan that is going to hopefully revitalize, restore downtown Montgomery, and without that piece of property, I don't see how it could actually be possible. I don't see that a lot of things could be done to that property commercially, and I don't see anybody residentially doing anything, but I feel like that we should not lose control of that one piece of property. Thank you. Oh, my name is Cheryl Fox. I live at 821 Stret Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. Item number four on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on the City Council Regular Meeting minutes of December 10, 2024. Item number five. Consideration of possible action on the acceptance of the quarterly investment report for quarter four, 2024. And item six. Consideration of possible action for the council to authorize the waiver of applicant insurance for this event, since this is a partnership with the city of Montgomery, and the city would sponsor the event and have it covered under the city insurance policy. Council, you can take these cumulatively or individually, with your pleasure.
Together is fine. I agree.
So we can, I'm okay with together. I'd just like to clarify that item number six is the Antique Festival. I wish that would have been in the agenda item, but, so it's the Antique, it's our annual Antique Festival that we're partnering up with a local citizen with, so, just for everybody's information.
Thank you for that clarification.
I make the motion that we accept all items as presented.
It's been a motion by Ms. Fox.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Olson, that we accept all items on the consent agenda. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. Item number seven on your agenda, under regular agenda. Consideration of possible action to appoint a municipal court judge and associate municipal court judge.
Mayor, Council, as you know, Ms. Duckett is out sick. She wanted to bring a full council possible action for the prior judge, left, moved to California, and she wanted to bring two judges tonight, associate judge and appointed judge. The appointed judge is Rosenquist, who's been with us before, and the associate judge will be Judge Finch. You have both their credentials in your packets, and both judges are here tonight. If you'd like to ask any questions.
Would you just come up and state your name for the record so that we have it, please, sir? Good to see you again, Judge Rosenquist.
Yes, it's been a few years. If y'all remember, I'm Robert Rosenquist. I've either been the prosecutor or judge here for, I think, about 15 years in different capacities. I made a career change about two years ago and had to resign from all my minimum support benches because I assumed a higher level bench, and so I did that for a period of time, and I think there's a quote from a movie, "I'm back." So I've also been appointed for the city of Magnolia and the city of Shenandoah, and Kimberly asked me to reach out and take over back this position that I gave up to Chad Peace back two years ago when I left. So I would be honored to come back and take up the role again. If y'all have any questions for me, I'd love to answer them. I think most of y'all probably recognize my name. Mr. Finch, behind me, known him unfortunately for probably 15 years as well, give or take a few years here and there. If y'all have any questions for either one of us, we can answer them. As far as having a backup judge, I know there's some budget considerations for that. Because I am appointed in at least three different cities right now, if there's ever an education year that the city has to pay for, you would only ever have to pay for one of us, because I can always have one of my other cities roll it in, so I can always move that around and allocate it, so there's no extra cost to the city at all, even on the education side, for appointing an alternate judge. So, any questions? I'm open to them.
I just have a question for Mr. Finch. This'll be your first time acting as a judge, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, need a motion, huh?
Yeah, something.
Yeah, let me get to it here. All right.
I make a motion that we accept item seven as presented.
Motion by Ms. Fox. Seconded by Mr. Donaldson, that we accept item number seven as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number seven as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number seven as presented. Thank you, Judge, just appreciate you coming. Thank you. Welcome back. Yes, welcome back. All right. Item number eight on your agenda. Consideration of possible action to approve a resolution accepting a petition for and calling for a public hearing on the creation of the crossing at Montgomery Public Improvement District within the city of Montgomery, Texas pursuant to Chapter 372, Texas Local Government Code, and authorizing the mailing and publication of notice to the public hearing.
So I'm assuming the engineers, engineers have anything on this? It's a PID, so what we're looking at is a PID here.
I think it's more of the engineering side of this, realizing how it's legal creation.
So when you guys approved the development agreement, it included provisions for organizing a PID for redevelopment, and this will be the first step of that, and all you're doing today is setting the hearing, which will be in a couple of weeks.
All right, so now the names of these developments change on me all the time, so this is the one right over here?
Yes.
Correct. So this is now, it's the Montgomery Crossing Development, which is right here along the railroad track between Old Plantersville and Old Plantersville.
And Alan, forgive me, I'm assuming you do have experience in PIDs? Because the city has never had a residential PID before. I think you thought we had had a few, we've never had any, so this is new to us, and just want to make sure that, because it's new to us, it's not new to you.
Sure, we can provide you all the information you would like on how PIDs operate. It will be essentially the same as commercial PIDs.
Okay. Yeah, that was a long time ago, so not this council.
One thing that I have to ask of Alan is, in all of these criteria things that they're talking about, you know, the acquisition and installation of pieces of art, et cetera, how do we really know how that plays out? Because we have, we have something that was presented to us some time ago, but nothing like that. How do you, and the other thing is, when it goes to a public hearing, what does that really mean? That the public can be against it, for it? What does that really mean to us or to the city?
The public can be against it or for it, and we have the opportunity to present more information about what it would really mean to the city in terms of how it would operate, what the proposed assessments would be, how they would function, what, what impact that might have on, you know, the residents who live there or the city.
So if the, during a public hearing, if there is opposition, what is the, what's the, how does that resolve?
Well, there may be certain aspects of the formation that you want to establish that could be affected one way or the other by that, you know, whatever opposition there might be. There might be some conditions, things like that.
Okay.
How much time do we need for staff and everybody to have, to get it publicized and have all the information for the public hearing? Is there a time limit? 30 days, two weeks?
14 days, something like that.
There's no date, there's no date on this agenda.
Yeah, so was it February? The hearing schedule for, which we.
February 11th?
Yeah.
That's the next count.
February 25th.
Okay, so I'm a little confused right now, because this agenda item is to call for a public hearing, so that means we hasn't set a date for it yet.
Well, that's, that's what this does. It sets the date as the February 25th.
While accepting the resolution.
Okay. Because there's no date on here, that's why I'm trying to understand what's going on.
The date's in the resolution.
Okay, it's on, it's on the second page. February 25th, 6:00 PM at City Hall. It's not in the top three.
Yeah, I just give it over to the lead, sorry, at the bottom, I just write the lead in the middle.
February 25th, okay.
Okay. So I make a motion to set a public hearing for the, what is this? Creation of the cross, creation of the crossing at Montgomery, PID?
The motion would be to accept the resolution.
And for the record, this is proposed resolution number 2025-04.
I've never seen anything like that. Yeah, this is, this isn't normal. Does it say anything about a resolution? In the agenda?
Just consideration of possible action to approve.
A resolution.
Okay. Well, let's just do this. Make a motion to approve item number eight as presented, to make it easy.
Good call, Casey. Good call.
Motion by Casey Olson. Seconded by Mr. Donaldson, that we approve item number eight as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of accepting item number eight as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number eight as presented. Number nine on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on the Hills of Town Creek, Section 5, acceptance of the infrastructure and entering into the one-year warranty period, and authorize the interim city administrator to sign the certificate of acceptance.
All right. Good evening, Council. This item is regarding, as you just stated, Hills of Town Creek, Section 5. So back on December 17th of last year, we did a file inspection. If you look on page 51 of your packets, you'll see a copy of that, followed by 52 of the actual punch list identified at that inspection. There's a handful of items that we identified as monitored to look at the one-year warranty, so they were to be addressed, but just pre putting on the notice that we're going to be looking at these, which includes things like the sidewalks. So as part of their, the plans, they installed, home builders don't want the sidewalks in front, while the building homes are going to break them, so they have to have themselves buy them one year as they're building the houses. Things like checking on some minor cracking that had developed and see how, if it's normal cracking or there's additional work that needs to be done at the one year, and so that is listed. So our recommendation is to accept it into the one-year warranty period, which would end on December 17th of 2025. Just as a reminder, this project has been plotted, that was approved at a previous council meeting, and the process going forward is so about 30 days out from that December 17th date, we will have a reinspection with the same, the engineer, the developer, the contractor, generate a new punch list, and then come back to council to officially end the warranty period at that time.
So Chris, are you saying there are cracks in the road?
There are. Monitor, analyzing cracks near the inlets. There were monitor curbs and remove or replace as needed, and monitor curbs again. So most of them was issues around the curbing that, the reason we say wait until the one year is because they're getting damaged during construction of the homes, so let's just catch it all at one time, and at the one-year warranty, get all those curbs addressed at the same time that aren't done by the home builders.
So can you touch on the sidewalks one more time? Because the way it's written in here is basically, obviously, I understand we wait to pour the concrete for the sidewalks because they're going to break them up, but if we wait till the end, and then they pour whatever, and our one-year warranty is up, do we get an extra one year for anything they don't have done? Because they just pour some junk and leave it in all cracks, and it's on us.
Right. So the, I don't have a good answer, pretty honest. The way it's been handled with other developments as those, and sidewalks go in with the homes, and there isn't a separate one-year warranty for each kind of home sidewalk that goes in. It's all kind of caught at that time, there isn't an additional timeline. But that's something that I will have to give to the city attorney to see the best way to address that regarding the sidewalk component.
Okay.
So if you, if you want, regarding the sidewalks specifically and that concern, accept with that caveat of bringing that clarification back to the next council meeting for how that happens, but this will allow them to do is continue with pulling building permits, because they're not allowed to get building permits until, however, we do need to get that clarified and get back to the next one or two council meetings.
I make a motion to accept the infrastructure and enter into the one-year warranty period with the acceptance of item 23 concerning sidewalks, and authorize the interim city administrator to sign their certificate of acceptance with Hills of Town Creek, Section 5.
Did you say with the exception of item?
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you.
With the exception of item 23.
So all of this but 23? Just making sure I understood.
Yeah, because that's the only one that really deals with sidewalks.
And you'll come back with this?
Yes, we can put that as an extra item, or if it needs to be, if it doesn't need an action item, we'll send out notice to council. I'll give the attorney and staff on the best approach to that, so y'all get the information.
There's a motion on the table. I'll second, the second by Ms. Langley, that we accept the infrastructure and enter into the one-year warranty period without accepting item number 23, which is regarding the sidewalks, on this agenda item. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number nine as presented with, with exception to item number 23 sidewalks, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the item number nine as presented without, accepting item 23 regarding the sidewalks. Item 10 on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on the execution of a variable width access easement for Water Plant 2, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
All right. What this easement is, so there is an existing access road that goes from Worsham to the Water Plant 2 site, and it goes through the Hussey's property. It's been existing, what was found out is that the road and the actual road and the easement were not in alignment, so this is just covering that up. So it's a, you'll see an exhibit, it's just kind of a sliver, a 10-foot wide, kind of triangle server on page 71 of your packets. This just gets the entirety of the access easement actually, the easement, so there's legal right to it. This has been reviewed by the property owners, they have offered no objection, the signed copy isn't in your packet, but for discussions there, find what the language is.
Make a motion to accept item number 10 as presented to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll second it.
It's been a motion, a second by Ms. Fox, that we accept item number 10 as presented to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 10 as presented. Item number 11 on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on the approval of the BNSF Railway Pipeline License Agreement, Old Plantersville Road 12-inch waterline extension project, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Right. What this item is, so Redbird Meadows Development is selling a 12-inch waterline that goes along Old Plantersville, Old Donovan Plantersville, connects over by the Methodist Church, and then over by Willmac Cemetery. Part of that is they have to cross the railroad, so council has previously approved this agreement. However, due to time, it needs to be re-upped, and there's four changes that are in the disagreement that's in front of you from what you've seen previously. One is the permit fees have been increased, however, the city already paid those back in November of '24, so therefore, the payment that was received counts toward it. We have that from them. The contact information for BNSF from their scheduling agent and for their permitting person has been updated from the agreement. And then there's additional provisions on the required slope of the drilling assembly itself. This was going in horizontally, waterline, there, it doesn't change the plans or the cost to it. So again, we recommend approval of this agreement, and just more updating the project as a whole, they've completed the majority of the work minus this crossing, and they'll get that completed and get it wrapped up.
Who's putting in the waterline?
Bull G is the contractor, is a contractor working for the city, but it's funded by Redbird Meadows Development.
So we're going to get a, basically a bore scope, camera view when they're done? When they get done boring?
The, I will take a look at the exact terms of the agreement. I don't, I do not recall.
Because that's something we talked about, when we have bores now, we want to see when they get done, what they board through?
Oh, 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 oh. So this one, they'll put in a steel casing first, and then the waterline will go in after, so we won't have, it's not, the issue of boring with the directional drilling and things of that is not the same in this case versus where dry utility things are going in that cause damage. You know, it's on a waterline, it'll pop up if it's.
Yeah, that will, but what they board through, we won't know, right?
Correct.
The places they cross other lines, are they going to show us that they?
Yeah, I mean, well, as they're crossing, the, both the BNSF inspector and our inspector will be on site, so if there's any damage hit on a dry utility, it'll be noticed right away, so, and they have to do one locates.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the license agreement between the city of Montgomery and the BNSF Railway, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
It's a motion by Mr. Olson.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Langley, that we approve the BNSF Railway Pipeline License Agreement for the 12-inch waterline extension, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 11 as presented. Item number 12. Consideration of possible action regarding authorizing a utility easement with Shadow Creek Estates LTD to allow for access for city of Montgomery infrastructure.
Right. So this, what this is, is for the Taylor Morrison Development, which is also known as Lone Star Ridge over on Lone Star Parkway. Part of the feasibility and part of how they're painting water and sewer services off of Buffalo Springs. So developer found early on in their design, there wasn't easement there, but it was a private easement, and it wasn't a public easement for the city use, so they were required to go obtain a public easement for the location of public utilities, which would include both the waterline, so they'll have a waterline that connects to Buffalo Springs, routes through the development and connects to Lone Star Parkway, as well as their sewer line will head out that easement down to Bridge Station 10. So what this is, is just the actual easement itself between the city and the current property owner, which is the Shadow Creek Estates LTD. Shadow Creek has reviewed and signed it, as well as their lien holder, and we would recommend the city approve the same. And page, sorry, page 103 of your packet shows that location. This is on the backside of the homes on Field Point Drive, on the south side.
Make a motion to accept item number 12 as presented.
A motion by Casey. Seconded by Ms. Langley, that we accept item number 12 as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 12 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 12 as presented. Number 13 on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on acceptance of the engineer's recommendation of half associates to complete the design services related to the Town Creek water, wastewater treatment plant, sorry, project, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Right. This item we talked about for a while, so if you remember, y'all solicited qualifications, half was selected. Process was essentially put on hold while we were waiting on the permit, because we didn't want to get design going with a permit flux. We now have that draft permit in hand. Final permit is on the way, still be a little bit before we get it, so now we have the half proposal, and we talked about this also at the budget workshop last week. So what their proposal is, is they have basic design services around $675,000, additional services for a total of $757,000, cumulative, not by themselves. That includes things such as survey, geotech analysis, some corrosion control, et cetera. And then there is also in the contract, an hourly services line for construction support throughout the bidding, submittal process that's in there. One other item to note in that supplemental services is they have a line item for grant support, so helping with identifying, so one of the reasons, if you remember, that half was selected was they have in-house funding specialists, and so there's a line item in there for their involvement to help identify and go after funding for the project. So total contract amount is $831,200 for all of those services, including construction. The timeline of this is their design expect to take, design and approvals, approximately 330 days from those who proceed, and then the construction will be thereafter. The attorney, your city attorney has reviewed this agreement, obviously half has prepared the agreement, we all find it to be in order, half is here, Pam and Ryan leading you, we all know, representing half, if you have any specific questions for them.
We're sure you want to go with half? Are y'all okay? Just kidding. Just kidding.
What was our original budget on this?
The original design budget was 600.
That's good, that. We're quite a ways over our original design budget. I was thinking it was like seven, but yeah.
Yeah, so we're, design is up to 674 from the 600 originally, just based on scope and time. Since that, 600 was like two or so years ago.
How long ago, Chris?
I think that original, when we did the COs, was I think that budget was around two years ago.
Yeah, 23?
We reviewed the numbers, and we feel that, you know, based on the scope of the project, that it is in line. And there was a bunch of negotiation back and forth between staff and half, so it's, wasn't a cartwatch.
So the original design, we're over a little, quite a bit, actually, for, what about with construction?
Yeah, the hourly construction services, that wasn't in that 600, but it is part of the contract that won't get started until as we get to that. That wasn't the overall construction budget of the project, not in the design. But we do need their services for that. So it's in there.
And just for clarity, this is the one off, took 149 on the west side?
Yes, ma'am. So the scope of this project is replacing the decommissioned wastewater plant on 149, just south of Town Creek, across from the Pro-Pac Dings.
Which will be needed, for sure.
Correct. So this will replace it to a 300,000 gallon a day plant. Your permit is for up to 600, so this will be the first phase. Their design will lay out for future improvements, so when you do that next phase of the project to go up to its ultimate capacity, it'll be as seamless as possible.
So we'll have the design already done. Okay. I'm with you. When is this gonna start?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Just kind of imperative to say yes.
Should be ready almost by Christmas.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with half associates to complete the design of the Town Creek wastewater treatment plant, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll second. All right. It's been a motion by Casey and seconded by Carol, that we accept the engineer's recommendation of half associates to complete the design services related to the Town Creek wastewater treatment plant project, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is open for discussion.
I have one thing, just a big request. You're gonna have to find some funding, cause we're over budget. So please find us some funding.
All right. All those in favor of approving the contract with half associates to complete the design of the Town Creek wastewater treatment plant, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will approve the contract with half associates for the Town Creek wastewater treatment plant, and have the mayor sign the agreement. We are tabling item 14. We're, it's taken off of the agenda, so the next item on your agenda?
15.
No, 14.
14, I thought was.
It's 14. And we are going to item 15.
So are you?
I don't know anything about.
So, I can, I'll provide. So the developer reached out to us today that they are not ready for the final plot. They do not have their performance bond in place, and so they requested it be pulled. They did not provide, they did not commit that it'll be at the next meeting. So I would just say a future date, when the developer requests. So this isn't a city-driven request to pull, this was a developer-driven request.
So then we could just do a pull it or take no action instead of table it, because technically, tabling would need to come back either to sign a date or bring it back at the next meeting.
So we can take no action, then?
Just take no action.
Okay. So we'll take no action on 14. Item number 15 on your agenda, consideration of possible action on acceptance of a utility and economic feasibility study for the BCS Capital Commercial and Multifamily Tract, development number 2415.
Right.
I want to table item 15. Till February 11th?
It's the 11th.
Next council meeting.
So what's, what's the reasoning?
Well, I'm just not settled about everything that's going on in there. We had a workshop yesterday, and two of the council members were absent, and I just got the, pardon?
I said it was at 2:00 in the afternoon, and we have day jobs, so.
I know. No, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not. I'm just saying, you missed what was going on. And so I just got the feasibility study, actually four hours ago, on my thing, and I just want more time to look at it. You know, I don't, that's my objection, I just need more time to discuss.
If you'd like to, I can run through the study, and then y'all decide on the actions, so at least I can explain the contents of it. And if you decide to carry over in the next meeting on acceptance, that way I can answer questions and at least kind of.
I actually think that's fair, if you would do that for those that were not able to make yesterday's meeting, and.
This one's on a, been on a quicker timeline than normal, and, you know, we just had the, so I'll go through it, it's okay with you.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. So, you know, as, as Councilman Donaldson was saying, yesterday, there was a presentation by the developer on this project, went over the general scope of the project and the potential alternatives that they're looking at. That's one thing that I did kind of put caveat on the study, and also I said in my email to y'all earlier today when I sent this out, was there is a lot to be determined with this project. So in terms of, is there a hotel? Is the multifamily component, you know, is, is a sure thing? The retail component, the actual makeup of this is still to be determined. So, you know, we did, we went off the information that we received for this study. I'll go through it and kind of point out some of the items to consider, and then definitely think of questions, and then we can go from there. Cause I think that, especially with the development of this scale, that touches, you know, Buffalo Springs and CB Stewart and 105, this development agreement, if it gets to that point, definitely has a lot of moving pieces to it that need to be considered before anything is put. Okay, so going through your packet, I will start, this is the paper copy in front of you, start on page three, the executive summary, and, and hit the highlights, and then as normal, I will kind of go through a handful of the items, and then divert your attention back to the exhibits in the back, which are really what you talked about. So, as always, you know, this project is in the city. There is not annexation required for this tract. If you'll see on this exhibit A, in the back of your packet, where that property is. As far as water and sewer capacity, so, you know, both, as we've been talking about, you're getting tight, but you do have plans in place. So regarding your water plant capacity, the last council meeting authorized the booster pump addition. Let's take your average annual flow capacity from roughly 58,000 gallons a day to 730,000 gallons a day. And then you also solicited RFQs for the water plant number four, design project. We plan to bring that back to you at the next meeting, or following to move forward that process, process to get water plant four designed to meet the ultimate need of these ongoing developments within the city. The wastewater treatment plant project we've talked about, so obviously with the project you just authorized on the last agenda item, that goes a long way to get to your capacity needs. Based on the projected timing of this development, other developments, you know, we're, we're still kind of right in line with it, as long as things stay on schedule to get the capacity in. But I would say that again, based on projected timing, that next phase after this project is gonna be quickly on the heel, based on the time involved in developments within the city. We're down to kind of the bottom half, you'll see cost of potential projects for the development. So one thing I wanna note is, you know, we've looked at kind of all the different types of improvements and what they touch. And I think that there's definitely room to discuss the final scope as part of how they phase their development, what the final land plan turns out to be, if it includes hotel, if it includes as many multifamily units, has to all be discussed as part of the development agreement. But some of the items that we identified, the one, roadway improvements to Buffalo Springs and CB Stewart, both of those roads are in, are in rough shape. And as y'all did for the Home Depot project and extending concrete, you know, extending that further, if you look at exhibit B in the back of your exhibit C in the back of your packets, we'll see roughly those general scopes of what those are showing. This also brings up, you know, a lot of the master plans that the city has looked at and put together between the different alternatives, is intersection improvements at CB Stewart and Buffalo Springs. There's been the roundabout concept, things thrown out. You know, again, there's a lot of development that's happening on this corner. Part of the discussion that, that ultimately needs to be had is, is what should be done with that. The later utilities, a little bit more straightforward. So again, if you're looking at that exhibit C, they would extend water and sewer across the frontage of 105, as well as up Buffalo Springs Drive. The cost in here, assume that they extend it all the way down Buffalo Springs to Lone Star Parkway, because ultimately, that's what's gonna get the most benefit, is by making that connection to get the flow. Instead of, right now, water coming from water point three, all the way around Lone Star Parkway to get to the track, making that connection would be highly beneficial to close that additional loop. And something that should be considered as part of the feasibility, or excuse me, the development agreement with the city. So overall, there's, there's a lot, if you're looking at three and a half million of improvements by, if you did all of those scopes of work, and then if you adjusted the stuff that's immediately adjacent to the property, 2.8 million or so. But again, a lot of variation in that on what the final scope of the improvements become. Moving on to page four of your study, this is all based on information provided by the developer. So at full buildout, they're estimating between 90 and 97 million in assessed value, and based on your current tax rate, and a 95% collection rate, you would be looking at approximately $360,000 a year in additional avenue tax to the city at full buildout, based on what was provided. Moving on to page five, again, I've covered a lot of the items, but the, how this study was based on, was based off of one multifamily reserve of about 17 acres, and the remainder, the parcel being a pension pond and commercial. Again, if the hotel concept that was discussed yesterday goes forward, that will change the usages, demands. I wouldn't say it would change the linear improvements, because most of those are sized, you know, the 12-inch line is plenty, but the scope and turn lanes, et cetera, that would be required would obviously be dictated by their final land plan. One other important thing to note, we talked about this last night, was the zoning of the property. So when you look at exhibit B in your packets, the northernmost portion of the property is in the planned development district, and then the remainder is within zone B, commercial. So based on their land plan, they have multifamily that would extend in the planned development, as well as into the commercial. So a rezoning would be required in order for that to be allowed within that zone. Additionally, one thing that your attorney is working on is the, the architectural control, which also has overview over land use in the PD is, is believed to be by the Buffalo Springs Architectural Control Committee, is who that right passed down to after the agreement expired. Your attorney's working on a memo for that, so we have it in writing to go with. So that is with the land use within the PD zone. Okay. Talked about water. Again, let me know if y'all have questions when you have had a chance to review. I'm moving on to page eight regarding drainage. So again, one thing that your attorney is working on is a memo regarding the stance on drainage for this tract. So just to bring y'all back around, in the development agreement with Mr. LaFevre back in 2004, it tied him into certain drainage provisions in a drainage study at that time. So your attorney is writing up, so we have an official memo from the attorney on the stance of that. But it is believed that they will have to follow the current rules and regulations of the city since that agreement had expired. Bathing in traffic, we've talked about, again, a big caveat being we need to, the final lay plan is gonna determine impact analysis and what capacity improvements are needed aside from the actual condition of the roadway. And then finally, I'm moving on to page nine, and the impact fees. And these impact fees that you see at the bottom of that page, the water impact fee of approximately 348,000, and wastewater impact fee of 334,000, that is based on one 3-inch cap, one 6-inch cap, and six 2-inch caps. So based on the best available today, again, as cap size changes, development changes, that number will change with it as well. And other than that, I've talked about the tax rates. One thing that we did include in here that I have not typically provided is on the very last page of your packet, you'll see what is currently in the, your development handbook as far as the process on kind of what comes next. So I know there's different questions on what is the proper process for this. So this is what is currently in there. We added in the box that doesn't look like the rest of them, development agreement. So that is a newer step, just to clarify in there. But, you know, so where they are right now is that this utility and economic feasibility study, right before the development agreement, and then they go into the development agreement, annexation, which doesn't apply on this one, but zonings, variances, things like that, would be the next piece of the process before they move into full design and construction of the development.
Thank you.
Yes.
For this. It's been needed and been asked for for years. Thank you.
I do like this, but I was gonna say, why, why is this not presented, has this been presented to P&amp;Z prior to us coming to city council?
The development or the process?
The development.
The development, has this, it has not. So the.
Why?
More of a meeting timing, to be honest. So this, our typical is we will, after this meeting at the next P&amp;Z, which is next week?
Next week.
Next Tuesday, we will present this feasibility study to P&amp;Z. But the process that has been followed is, so they had a pre-development meeting back in December, requested the feasibility study right before the holidays, and then we got to this point. And so feasibility study wasn't ready for the P&amp;Z meeting in January, so it'll be presented the next available one.
To me, it seems like it would be much more logical to present P&amp;Z prior to putting it to council, but that is just.
And again, this is why we wanted to present this process in here, and, you know, welcome to, you know, by a separate meeting, discuss modifications to this process, and ways to make sure that between P&amp;Z and council, is it, you know, the workshop, you know, my personal opinion felt was helpful yesterday to hear, just the timing, the back-to-back makes it a little bit difficult to process and move on to the next piece of it. But that's something that we can definitely discuss and work into the process. So as developments come in, there's that opportunity for the workshop and discussion on the forefront before we get into this phase of the development.
So, the question I have, and I'm gonna lean to agree with Stan on his tabling, but the question I have about this feasibility study is, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the, the meeting yesterday. But if they haven't hammered down what their design is, how do we make a feasibility study? Sounds like a bunch of guessing.
There, there's a lot of assumptions made. So what we, we asked them to provide, or every developer could provide, is their estimated water and sewer usage, estimate, or approximate land plan and estimated values, which are what drive this study. So that is what this is on. So the 70,000 gallons a day of, of water and sewer demand, roughly, that is directly from the developer on what they think that those usages will be.
Right, but if they don't have a hammered down plan, how, they, they have no idea.
Correct.
So this isn't what the papers wrote on.
Well, the, as far as the actual, I think, you know, the overall concept of utility extensions and roadways, I think that those stick kind of regardless of the final use. But in terms of capacity needs.
Yeah, so that's, that's what the true need of a feasibility study is, what's our water, what's our sewer? The, the roads ain't going anywhere, they're there, we can see those, but we don't, we don't know what our capacities are, that's what the feasibility is.
Right. This gets us close, but there's still a lot of variation.
I'm not, it's a guess.
Right.
And it's a poor one at that, because they don't have a plan.
Keep, keep in mind, though, that Chris's letter says that this doesn't bind the city to anything. Moving forward with this feasibility agreement just allows them to move forward with their due diligence and their process. It doesn't bind the city to anything. It also, this land, it's 32 acres, give or take, it's not platted. So any, they can't do anything without coming through planning and zoning, coming back to the city for plating, regardless of whether it's half an acre, five acres, 10 acres, a whole 30 acres, all that has to go through the normal city, planning, zoning, plating, all of Chris's review, all of that stuff still has to happen. So this is just giving them the ability to say, this is what we have in mind, these are what we think we can do, correct me if I'm wrong. So we think at this stage, they think at this stage, they're gonna do, dedicate 15-plus acres to commercials, 17-plus acres, give or take, to some form of multifamily. They don't know what capacity, they're still, they still have to go through, they have to follow all of your ordinances, even your new ordinances that haven't been enacted yet, because there's no plating. yet because there's no plating in place. So your process, the city process will continue to move forward as they're moving forward with their due diligence. So this isn't binding you to anything, this is just
I know it doesn't bind us, but it should give us an idea of what we can do because hey, they come back to us and say, oh, hey, we're gonna do all this stuff. And all of a sudden, now our feasibility study that we had isn't worth the paper it wrote on because we have no idea what gallons we're gonna use until we finally get a plan. And we should have had the plan when we started, not after the fact. That's the whole point, they get a plan in advance.
What is this good for? What are they wanting this?
Does this say that we're interested in it?
This is covered, so what this does, it gives them the overall picture. So I agree with you, you know, there's seventeen acres of multifamily, fifteen acres of the remainder. This is not really unlike the shops I'm up there in the other shopping centers. The difference is the variation of potential uses. Like the hotel was the first time that was thrown out yesterday, which obviously is a large user. But what we don't know at this time is that, okay, is that hotel gonna eat away from the number of multifamily units? Is that hotel gonna eat away from the commercial space? And come back, so okay, this study was based on eighty thousand gallons a day, seventy thousand gallons a day of usage. Their current land plan says it is sixty. Okay, we're within range. Or their current land plan says we're at twenty, hey, we gotta do it all, stop and reevaluate the timing of these facilities and the timing to be able to
Is it truly feasible? Is it possible?
Right.
But on the feasibility study, it's not binding the city to do anything, nor is it costing the city to do the feasibility study. So my opinion is
And I agree, but I'd still like to have a better plan.
Not to pass the feasibility study.
And I hear your concern with the ambiguity of what the final development looks like. And I think that, you know, for this development, that development agreement, you can spell those things out. And so like you did for Redbird, you said you're up to, I'm gonna use not the right numbers, but six hundred homes plus or minus ten percent. If you change that, you have to come back and re-negotiate. You can structure that in here to say it needs to, Alan, correct me if I'm going astray because I'm getting into the, the agreement side of things, but structure that to say this is the terms of development, these are the capacities, these are the uses that are in here. If this changes or if this substantially changes by this, you have to come back and renegotiate.
But again, final line to me is the fact that it is not binding the city to anything nor is it costing the city. It's just giving them due, they're doing their due diligence to see what it's gonna cost them and what, how their plans will
But it should give us a good idea, right? And no feasibility study is gonna be exact, but we have no set-in plan. When a developer comes to us and says, I'm gonna build three hundred homes, well, we can figure a good estimate of what three hundred homes is. But if you come to us and say, yeah, I think I'm gonna build something, I don't know what I am yet, but, you know, do a feasibility study, we have no idea.
But they may not either, they're just saying, hey, we wanna look, we're gonna pay you to go look at this property and see, we know what we can do and according to your zoning, let us go do some due diligence. This is what we think, but it might change. And we're gonna pay you to do that, and you don't have to take any of the risk.
I mean, if you guys are comfortable, I'd much rather have a plan in advance.
That doesn't hurt the city at all.
Have something to study versus, well, let's just throw something in the wind and hope it sticks.
This is a, this is a unique situation, and I, I mean, and I agree, but at the same time, like, there's no risk to the city and
So what I think, you know, after this, they have a better picture of ultimate cost. And they will likely go back and say, okay, now, based on the cost, the land cost, et cetera, what is the best use? And how be able to more dial in their land plan and say, okay, here's what it looks like before you get to that development agreement stage where you would be actually agreeing to provide a service.
And one of the things we talked about
Yesterday?
Yesterday in Lent was drainage. And drainage is a big what-if in this scenario. At one point, there was a central drainage plan for this property that required no additional detention retention, and that included the Kroger tract. At some point, when a previous engineer and firm worked for the city, they basically cut off our drainage. They did not require, they did not size Kroger and Home Depot, those, that infrastructure properly to accept the drainage that it was supposed to accept from the west. So this feasibility study allows them to look at the overall plan and say, okay, this is what the city capacity is, this is our range, this is what we are looking at, these are the different pieces of the puzzle that we could put together. And depending on that, we have to dedicate one acre, three acres, five acres to detention. And that gives them the ability to say, to tell us, yes, we can do it, or no, we can't because
Right.
Five acres of detention is different than three acres. And either way, it was a costly mistake for all of us. And so we need to somehow mitigate or understand what that is in real life. And they have a couple of different options they're looking at, but again, they have to look at the big picture and understand this just lets them move forward in that process.
Okay.
My motion to table still stands till February eleventh. I'd rather wait to see what the attorney says about the zoning and about the drainage and get a little more
And how, you gotta find out unless they do a feasibility study about the drainage.
They kinda need to do the ambiguity of the feasibility study. I always gonna tell you
It's a vacant piece of property we're talking about. And look at all this money they're willing to spend. But we still don't have a clear indication of what they're gonna do because the hotel issue came up yesterday, I don't know how, but it's not in the feasibility plan, but it may come up, it's gonna change. So just like Casey said, everything is gonna have to be rehashed.
Yeah.
You know, it's gonna have to be redone. And I just want some more time to think about it. But I appreciate, I appreciate this last page because that's what I want to talk about in two weeks. We have a changeover in personnel, and we need to get under our belt how we're gonna do things from this day forward. We're not gonna get out of order and get ahead too fast because when we do, we make mistakes. So it's my understanding that we need to sit down and let us think about this, let us hear from our attorney, and let us weigh all the options that we have before we go forward. And I'm definitely upset because it hadn't gone through planning and zoning. But that's another issue that we have to take care of. We have to decide how we want this to go from here, one place to another. And this is a good starting point for us, but I'm not saying, you know, I've never seen anything like this, and I appreciate it. But we need to decide at city council with our city employees exactly how we're gonna take, handle city business going forward. You know, because to me, we just get rushed too much, in my opinion. Things come to us, and y'all want an immediate answer, and I'm really not willing to give you an immediate answer. I count a lot of time on the experience and the know-how of my cohorts here because they've lived here longer. But, you know, I'm getting to the point where I've gotta have more time to digest things. And I just, you know, I'm not against the thing. I'm not against the proposal or the development, I'm just not at a point where I'm comfortable saying, yeah, let's do this.
So Sam, they're just seeing what their idea is feasible, that's what their feasibility is. They can't even give you a solid plan yet because they don't even know, they haven't done their study. You've gotta approve this for them to go do their study to see
This is to approve the feasibility study.
Right, but I mean, but then they're gonna start nailing down what they want from here.
No, and I understand.
There's nothing yet to submit to planning and zoning for approval because this is, they're still in the early stages.
Right, this is very conceptual.
And if I can add a little bit, any feasibility studies going to be based on, you know, the developer's assumption of their water wastewater needs, based on, you know, their guess of what they might develop. But if those water wastewater needs change, you know, go up dramatically or whatever, you can always require another feasibility study.
At their cost.
That's what I'm looking for.
You know, the city has the infrastructure, they support their changed plan.
Okay, so that's good. So we can ask for another feasibility study when we actually get a plan, right? So this will allow them to move forward?
The plan is different
Yes, it's, yeah. Yes, Stan's already made much of it.
That's right. He made the motion for this.
Right, and I believe he gave the option.
And you all have done that in the past where, you know, feasibility study was done, the package set, and you did an update.
Yeah.
Different developer, changed hands to the study.
You're not actually approving any development.
No, I just, I don't wanna approve a feasibility study saying, oh, yeah, we can handle this, then they come to a plan and like, oh, your feasibility study said you could, we didn't have a plan to do the study on, so.
Yeah, no, I understand, but it's not, it's their risk, they're paying for the feasibility study.
Well, it's their risk until we can't supply enough water, and then we're drilling more wells and putting in more pumps that we can't afford. It's our risk at the end, and every taxpayer in this town, if we make a bad decision.
Believe me, we've been paying the taxes.
Oh, I get it, right? So unless you wanna pay a whole bunch more because we made a bad decision, I wanna make, I want a plan.
Yeah, there's a lot more to vote on and look at before to make sure that bad decision. And I think, just to be clear, I think council's gun-shod because we've been misguided, is the right word, as of late previously, and so forgive us for that, it's just
I think we, I think, first of all, that they should be commended because they're doing their due diligence to do the best property development that they can possibly do in a city.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not down in the development, I just, I like a plan. I wanna see a plan.
And this is launching the plan.
That's why they do the feasibility study, to give you one.
No, you used a plan to do the feasibility study, then you move forward. That's how everyone has ever done, you get a plan.
So there is a motion on the table, to table that is by Stan. Is there a second? So then the motion's killed, done. So then it is continuing to be open for discussion or if there's another motion to be made?
As long as we can ask for another one when we actually get a plan, then I'm fine with it.
Is that your motion?
I have a motion that we, that we accept, item fifteen as stated.
There's a motion by Ms. Fox.
I second.
Second by Mr. Olson to accept item number fifteen as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable if there's any more discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number fifteen as presented, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, we'll accept item number fifteen as presented. Thank you. All right.
But I am not comfortable with having this without seeing a better plan.
I'm confident we will see.
So that is worth that in the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, may I ask one question? Chris, at some point, will P and Z see these plans prior to the city?
Next week.
So next week, we'll present
No. Prior to this, will city, will P and Z see the plans prior moving forward?
The next set of plans.
Next set of plans. Well, they see them before we do.
So the, following the process you have, the next step would be a development agreement, which would be between council. And, you know, as far as how that gets amended, if that is a joint workshop on between council and P and Z, or if it's the request for P and Z to provide an opinion on what improvements should be included or improvements of the agreement, that's something that we can definitely, you know, take advisement on and take to P and Z before. And then as Stan mentioned, kind of revisiting that last flow chart in it, you know, instead of the way that is listed, it goes to P and Z first, then to council, then feasibility study, we can definitely have that discussion.
So it's a little bit difficult, P and Z meeting once a month, and then us meeting twice a month, and sometimes even three, so that it delays some of the developer progress as well, which is not their problem, but not our problem, but our problem and their problem. So that's where it gets a little bit klugey. Okay. All right, next item on your agenda, the departmental reports. Item number sixteen, Police Department, two oh two four, annual report and code enforcement, twenty twenty four annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Dennis.
You have the twenty twenty four annual packet with you for your viewing. I'd like to point out that the city or the police department had applied for a grant early on in January of twenty twenty four, and it was approved in late, in early December of this year for body warm cams. So, you know, that's one of the items I wanted to point out. The agency is also very grateful that during the CCP program process, you all supported us and the voters voted for this, for the program. And so it's gonna be very beneficial to the agency as well as the city as a whole. And I'm able to take any questions if you have.
You're slackers with only seventeen hundred and ninety-nine training hours. I was hoping you'd get that one more in for eighteen hundred. But wicked impressive that average per officer is a hundred and twelve, nearly a hundred and twelve and a half hours of training. Additional training, that's, that's huge for our department, that's huge for their personal growth. And it's one of the, I think, golden carrots that we wave, that Chief waved, that you wave to recruiting good officers and keeping them here.
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to point that out and commend you on that.
Yes, thank you very much.
Also, all of your engagement. There's, there's been a huge uptick in community engagement, taking the, we're the only department in the county that engage with churches to make sure that they're safe, they're safe and giving them guidance. So great job. Our community outreach, I feel like I'm hearing it from different facets of the community. You've got the right person in that spot. Officer Bauer will, he greets and meets everyone, so, and definitely, they appreciate it.
Yes, we have a great, a great team overall, together, you know, behind us, there's many things that this organization, organization can do for the community. We also brought on the Take Me Home program that started in December.
Huge.
And I know next year, we're also gonna add the RAD program to offer to the citizens of, of this year, I'm sorry.
And would you give a high level of what the Take Me Home is? I don't know that everybody's heard it.
So the Take Me Home program is
Awesome.
A free assistance that the police department offers to members of the community, to include the ETJ. This is a program that has taken a lot of time to put together, but is to help get members of the community who suffer from cognitive disorders, Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's, autisms from all spectrums, and dementia. And we work with the sheriff's office. We have the family members or the guardian of this individual. We get photos, we get information on, on this person so that if they do become lost, they will contact the sheriff's office. They will let them know that they are a part of the Montgomery Take Me Home program. And what we do is we're able to pull up a shared drive that we have with all the officers to get a photo, learn how to communicate with this person, should we come in contact with them, so that we can get a family member to come pick them up. The goal is, as this grows here in the city that it grows countywide, so that other agencies can be a part of this. So we're, I am working with sheriff's office to get this process going.
So that you know what triggers the individual that's lost or how to handle them, and it's
Yes, if they're in crisis, you know, what's gonna be the best way to approach them? Is it, it could be a song, or it could be a phrase that we would
Oh, wow.
We could potentially talk to them about. And so it's, it's very important that we're able to get that information out. So if this individual is actually outside of the jurisdiction, and we can get the information that they're part of the Take Me Home program, we can then provide that information to the responding agent officer and or agency if they're on the other side of the county or in the harbor.
Thanks for leading the way, that's great.
Very good.
Thank you, I appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is item number seventeen, Public Works for October, November, and December of twenty twenty four.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, you've got a lot of information, unbooring information.
No, it's not, I read every line of it, Mike, y'all were busy. You were busy.
We're always busy.
Yeah.
I'd like to say, I'd like to say thank you to Chris and his team. I know he hit a little bit on the negotiation they did with HAF, but they did a lot of negotiation, I want y'all to know that. The numbers started out really high, they worked with them, got some things cut, and brought the number way down for us, so they were
Well, thank you for fighting on our behalf.
Keep in our mind, I just wanted to say a little bit more about it than just, than just what he said, so. Yeah, I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all have.
I took a trip last week from one oh five to one ten ninety-seven on Buffalo Springs. It happened to be before sunrise and, you know
Before sunrise?
Before sunrise. And before they concrete, you know, I'd like to know why we don't have any road stripes on it. We don't have a center line, we don't have any stripes, lane keep assist, I mean, it's like, I mean, how come we, we don't have a center, at least a center line?
On the, on the concrete?
On Buffalo Springs from where it's concrete all the way to ten ninety-seven, it's just a blank road. I mean, and at night, for older people, sometimes they may have I mean, and at night, for older people, sometimes they may have issues with vision. You know, it's, it can be difficult.
Yeah.
And I just want to know why, if it's possible for us to strike it.
We, so we can, we can have it strike. Buffalo Springs is definitely one of the roads that's on the top of our list for, for a lot of work to be done. I'll be honest with you and say that if we strike it right now, it's not going to come out great. Maybe better than nothing, but yeah, that is a heavily traveled road that we know needs, needs a lot of work done to it. But let me look at it and see, see if there's something we can do in the meantime until we get a, you know, a good long-term fix for that road.
Okay.
Can you look at it before sunrise?
We will.
Was it you guys that lowered the mound of dirt that I think contractors left in front of the snowball stand?
Yes.
Thank you for that. I had several complaints and I kept trying, going to tell you, it looked terrible.
Well, it was.
Oh, wait.
Those two big old humps of dirt, it was bad.
The fire line tap, yeah.
Yeah.
So that was a fire line tap that we had to, that we had to perform. Believe this or not, it depends on what time of the month you dig and how big of a mound you end up. I'm dead serious. The phases of the moon impact that significantly. You can, you can dig a hole and fill it in. Philip will testify to that. It must have been, it must have been dug at a, at a, at a full moon whenever a lot of dirt was left over. But we wanted to leave it and let it settle as much as we could, but we got it.
I just didn't know if it was a mistake or what happened, like, that's funny. All right.
So I, I just have one question and it, we had that cold, you know, some pretty cold temperatures there for a few days last week. Has anybody checked on our, our vacant property over here?
213.
Yeah.
I don't know when, I don't know when the last time we walked through it, but I'll ask. So I know our foreman walks through it regularly to keep, to keep watching things. Ever since we had the water rego, a couple of years ago, he does. And the water is off, we keep the meter off over there. We turned it on for inspections here a while back when we had a potential buyer on it, but we do keep it off. But I can find out and get you an answer on that.
I mean, just as long as, I mean, the water's off as long as, while the lines are drained. I'm sure we don't keep the heat on in there either, so.
Yes, we do. Yeah, we, we leave the air on.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Number 18, Financial Report as of December 31st, 2024, Ms. Mary Ann. Sorry.
All right, Mayor and Council. You also have a quarterly report in front of you. I don't have anything of concern in the report. I would point out your sales tax revenue. So we've definitely had an uptick. The sales tax net payment trend for the month of October, we were 41, 40% over last year in October. The November collection was over 20% greater than last year and December's was 22% higher. So we're definitely watching that trend. We're looking at the detailed reports. We don't see anything that is a big red flag, like it doesn't belong to us. We do know that there were the entities that have been sent to the comptroller's office.
I was going to ask you about that, yes.
We are still waiting for a response from those entities to get with the field office to put a corrective plan into action.
So what is the plan of action on that? Because, so what if they don't respond to them? I mean.
Yeah, I, I'm sure that there is an enforcement mechanism, but I'm not 100% sure what that is. I do know in my conversation with HGL, we, HDL, we said we would have a conversation about this in March. That would give them a six-month window to at least take action, so.
All right, because I went walking and I noticed boxes from a retail store that has multiple locations and one being here and we're not collecting the sales tax from this location. And, but the, the, and I thought maybe perhaps part of the problem was it was going to the eight, headquarters location, all of the shipments, and then they were being brought over here. And in fact, all of these shipments have our address, the Montgomery address on them. So that would lead me to believe that it should be two sets of books or a multiple set of books and not a one set of books?
Yeah, just to bring you all up to speed on this, the entity, we did report the entity to the sales tax group, HDL. They reported it to the comptroller's office and it's taken a little bit for the comptroller's office to figure out exactly what was going on. It was not one of those easy cases where they were able to say, oh yeah, hey, by the way, this is where you need to remit the sales tax. This is what we show as your previous reports. As a matter of fact, our one person at HDL has not seen this action from the comptroller's office previously where the comptroller has notified the entity that they need to work with the field office to get this corrected. So.
I can just imagine.
It's a complex case. It's a complex case, so.
So on this report that says December the 24th, December of '24, this money is actually from, tell me.
That would have been money that would have been collected at the businesses in October.
In October.
Remitted to the comptroller by November 20th.
Yep.
And then paid to us in December.
Okay.
So we're giving you the sales tax report for December showing, like, I'm giving you December reports. So we're doing the sales tax collection to align with what you're seeing in the budget for your sales tax collection at that time.
Right. So on that list of the top 30, Home Depot being number nine, this was money that you think they collected in October, which they were only open.
Right, we know it was, but you also have to remember, we've been seeing Home Depot revenue for the last 14 months.
All your online search today.
Right.
But they haven't ever been that high on the list.
No.
No.
No, it was definitely higher.
Yeah. Because they took Jim's spot, because Jim's hardware was number nine and now Home Depot's number nine.
Yeah. I anticipate we're going to see some shifting in those top 10 over the next six months.
Right. But I was.
Yeah, we only, there's only a, a fraction. There's just a small portion of October. You know, they opened like the 20-something of October.
And Discount Tire, number 23, that was kind of, I expected them to be higher, but they have a lot of ag exempt. People come in so they don't collect tax on.
Yeah, that could be.
That.
And that, that's, that's a rolling total that keeps your spot in that. Any other questions?
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
On our water and sewer income, is it possible to separate the two? See how much water we receive and how much sewer we receive on the report?
I think we can run a report based on the product code. Yeah, I think we can run a report based on that. The two are tied together.
I see that.
Yeah, I mean, the, it's, it's tied together unless it's irrigation.
Okay.
So yeah, but yeah, we can, we can run a, a product. Let me see what I can do on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Next up is the utility operations report for October, November and December of 2024. Hayes.
Good evening, Council. Got three reports there, so if you guys have any questions, I'd be glad to answer. I just wanted to point out on the very last report, on the January report, you do have a total there, which you don't really get to see too often. It's the full annual report for 2024 for your groundwater permit with Lone Star Groundwater Conservation District. And you can kind of see what kind of capacity you have there, your permits, since you guys got your new amendments. And looking good there with the, the full year gone by, you used 34% of your Jasper and 54% of your Cat, we love. And really no major concerns or excursions, we're using a pre-plant, looking good. If anybody's had any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I noticed on the accountability, we were in the 80s, high 80s, mid 80s.
Yeah.
And typically we had been in the high 90s. Can you let me, what's the difference?
Sure, sure, not a problem. As a matter of fact, when we ran those numbers, the number came out in October at that lower number. And so we brought that, well, actually Mike noticed it right off the bat. They found a leak and it was a leak that had probably been running for a while. They, they'd spent some time looking for it over there on 105. And it ran for quite a while until they found it and then they got it fixed. And as you can see, the accountability already started coming back up.
Yeah.
I expect it, because they found it sometime, probably right after Christmas time. So probably in the next report, be hopefully right back in the 90s.
Okay.
And if not, one of the other things that we talked about is looking at meters. And so we'll, we'll see if that's the case. They're already talking about, you know, doing some regular reporting on your, on your, just looking at accuracy on the big commercial meters, the big users, so.
Say, I had a leak, but I don't know that I've missed that much. So, okay.
You're Mr. Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry. My thing, my question was similar to Mayor's. I think the difference is the fact that we have a new permit. The new permits allow us to pull more water and so the percentages should go down. Based, you know, if we're basing our water, my question is when do the new permits go into effect? Because in October, the last time we had this discussion, we didn't see these new permit withdrawal numbers on the fix like we do today.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering when the permits went into effect, if you knew roughly?
I, I think I mentioned that actually at the September meeting was that the new permits had already been in effect. I think Catherine had got that all squared away with Lone Star and, and I failed to reflect that on my report. And so it was the next month or the month after that that we got it right and they got the percentages corrected based upon the new permitted allowances.
Yeah, and I understand that. No, you did, you did mention it in your, in one of, I don't, I've got the notes in front of me. So I, I see where you talked about the new permits and I think that's where some of the confusion came from on the percentages.
Yeah, because it looked like we were going to go over or we did go over, yeah. But we, we didn't, those permits came in in time, it wasn't a problem. And so now you're, you're looking good for all of the growth that's coming in the city.
So when we get well number two back online, are we going to still have these kinds of usages or what kind of relief are we going to?
It's going to fall into that Jasper column, Gulf Coast Aquifer. So it'll, I would expect you to still see around the same. You're just going to be pulling from two different wells to get to that second mountain. And just to kind of piggyback off of Philip with the permit limits, do you remember that we, the goal is applying for new allocations of permits about every three years? Because there's a cost that's steady and so you balance it out. So you're going to be paying higher permit fees as we catch up to that three years and then do it again because it's kind of how the math worked out. So kind of where you're sitting is a pretty good spot.
Chris, I have another, excuse me, I have another questions because it just came to me when I, when I talked about well number two. I mean, well, number two, the old hole, the one that craked, we, we plugged it, right? And we drilled a new one, or that's what we're going to do, right?
Correct, in the process of.
I just want to know, because there was some talk about we're trying to fix the first hole and I said no.
No, it's, I, I don't know exactly if it's completed today, but they had one crew that was plugging the existing well and another crew that was drilling the new.
All right, thank you.
When will number two come online?
They're summer?
Yeah, summer, so it's.
Said June.
25.
Oh, I was like, wait a minute.
Don't say that.
Yes, this, this summer.
Or April, I thought it was June.
I think the whole contract is scheduled to be done in June, but the well itself, they've drilled. They're now, now covered.
Oh, yeah, they, remember, I live right by them.
Yep, I had to re-drilled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right. 20 Municipal Court for October, November and December 2024 is, Chief, are you going to give that report? Since Ms. Duckett's still here?
No.
Well.
That's okay, we can read.
Yeah, so I, I just see a significant uptick in, in all of our totals, so that's good. Okay, great. All right, next up, 21 Engineering Report for Activities Since October 2022.
Hey. First time on our reports, Water Point Two Improvements. So as a, we haven't received a pay estimate, so the items that are reflected on here and those percentages are artificially low. They have actually completed, are substantially completed drilling the well. They sent us the well logs, we're going through those. They're, as I mentioned at the budget workshop, they're in the process of redesigning the foundation to replace the foundation of the ground storage tank. So that's in the works and the, and the plugging the whole well. So all is, all is going well so far. It's been a good contractor and hopefully the sound issues are getting themselves resolved. Moving on to the next page of our report, your 1097 sewer line project. So that contractor has moved on site. He did quickly find that there is an issue that the existing line that the surveyor picked up and missed the manhole. And actually, the line was located outside of the easement onto private property. And so we've come up with a reroute to move it all within the easement. It's about a $9,000 change order. What it does is it also gets it further away from the creek, which is good and closer to the river. So we got that today. Mike and Chief have approved that, so they're moving forward with that relocation work. And they should be done, I think, between the next two weeks or so. It's a pretty quick project, let's think it going. San Diego Sewer Rehab Phase One, we're still confirming the quantities. We finally got quantities. The contractors had multiple project managers switch out, so that one has been dragging to get that one complete. Sewer Rehab Phase Two, if you remember at your last council meeting in December, or at your, excuse me, at your December council meeting, y'all accepted that infrastructure. Since then, we received the final pay estimates and those have been sent over to Mary Ann in her office to process payment. Old Plantersville Forest May, and again, a couple of pay estimates were received. We had a final inspection and we're waiting on permanent vegetation. I think I've talked about this before, but part of the contract is obviously the seed that the contractor puts down in the fall is very different than the grass that grows in the spring. So the contract requires them to come back and reseed with a remuneration mix in the springtime to actually get full turf establishment put in. So that's, they're aware of it, it's on their list. And that project is kind of waiting for the Redbird folks to catch up, to be able to connect to it. Old Plantersville Waterline Extension is what we talked about, the BNSF permit. Most of that work is complete, less the bore of the railroad track and then a lot of cleanup work to be done between them and the developer along that project. No pay estimates this month. Talked about your TPDS permit, so we did receive the draft permit and we expect final permit finally in our hands in April by the time they base them in their normal processing times. But we don't expect by, from the draft permit to final permit to change anything that would change the design, which is why we had that item earlier today. Item eight, the McAllen Downtown Waterline Replacement Project. I don't have a lot of update on this. We have the workshop tomorrow between all parties, all of the downtown design teams and groups to go over the project as a whole, budget, and we'll get into more details at that time. Talked about item nine, talked about item four for the water plant qualifications. We expect to bring that at your next council meeting. On to page 214 of your packet, it's four of our report, Buffalo Springs Projects. We did receive the final pay estimate for the roadways, or three pay estimates, including the final for the roadways. That was accepted back at your January 14th meeting. We're still working with Home Depot to do final true-up on that, to get those costs covered. But that is also being held up by number 12. So the signal is being held up by Tech Dot. Tech Dot has a 30-day waiting period that ends on Friday, or next Friday, this Friday?
Next Friday.
Next Friday, operation before they'll officially accept it and turn it over, so.
Hasn't been operating for months?
It's been operating, but Tech Dot, they have to complete Tech Dot's punch list. It was down to Meyer things. It was down to Meyer things, they did that.
Okay.
They entered the Text Dot's thirty day window and then Text Dot will officially take it over. So we have a right to yell if it officially accepts, till Text Dot is accepted. And that should be probably not in the next meeting, just based on timing, but the following meeting after that. Next section is all your developments that are listed. There are a lot of them. They're in different stages. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on those unless you have questions specifically for me. Moving on to the next page, on the plat reviews. All of those are listed, they're ongoing. We have a couple that are outstanding, so we've talked about, or, excuse me, where'd I go? Montgomery Bend was the one that was, no action was taken, was pushed to the future meeting. We're also still working with MISD on the athletic complex. They're obviously out there in construction, but before the final taps and things will be done. They presented that and we're just doing some final comments to get that addressed. And then ongoing construction projects, I'm on to page six. You'll see a couple of photos of what's going on in Hills of Town Creek. All the work in Redbird is still continuing and ongoing. Onto the next page, the bottom, our flagship boulevard. As a reminder, we had that one year warranty back in December fifth. Contrasts addressing puncture cycles on that project. And then general ongoing activities, all the Text Dot coordination that's continuing between the different projects. Talked about it, the budget workshop, I'm now on the top of page eight, excuse me. The one oh five improvements are still trying to get a better timeline for Text Dot for those utility relocations. As of right now, it's still tentatively left for bidding in September of twenty-seven. And the last couple items, we're, you know, after our budget workshop, we're updating the kind of the rate analysis that we discussed, making the changes. And we're working with financial advisor to come back with some recommendations on funding mechanisms, as well as with half specifically regarding the wastewater plant. And following that, on the very last page of your packets, we'll see an updated development map that shows everything that's ongoing in the city. Couple of changes that have since been produced. Firestone has started moving dirt on their site next to Autozone, but the rest of this should be pretty well.
Chris, what's the Lone Star Cowboy Church?
They were looking at a building expansion on the backside of the property. So right now, there's a gravel lot on the, in the back. And so they were looking to pave and provide another building. We provided comments because we were concerned about drainage and traffic. As they continue to add spaces and places for people, traffic has already been a concern. And this was kind of the first major change. So we, we raised a concern about traffic also. It was, again, a major change they had implied, so we asked them to go through the plating process. And we haven't heard back in a few weeks, so we provided.
Is that building going to be near the private road?
Yeah, there, there, so all that work was going on by that private, by that exit in those lots.
And did you say reserves of Meelago? We haven't heard from them lately.
I have not.
I thought, I thought you had said they'd gone kind of silent, so.
Yeah, we haven't heard of reserves of Meelago. I just heard, it might have been last night, or, that the villages of Montgomery, right here across the street, is looking to move forward. But we haven't had any conversation with them since the people.
All right, thank you. I remember I was looking at this map and there'd be four white.
Yeah, there's, there's, we're going to have to come up with a new map.
Four white squares was what was going on, and now I think there's sixteen on here. It's crazy. A bunch, a bunch, yeah, okay, great.
I'd like to motion to approve all the departmental reports as presented.
Motion by Ms. Langley, second by Mr. Johnson to approve all the departmental reports as presented. This motion is debatable, amenable, requires majority vote, took them for discussion. All those approving the departmental reports as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries and will accept departmental reports as presented. Next item is the council inquiry. Does anybody have anything? Yeah, so State of the Precinct is happening January thirtieth from five thirty to seven thirty over at the Lone Star Convention Center, which is given by Commissioner Walker. So it'd be great to show up for that. I'd also like to thank you, Chief, and staff for giving us a table at the Chamber Gala this past Saturday. Lot of fun. Montgomery showed up and showed out, and they, they made us feel very welcome there and recognizing us there, so that was awesome. And there has been a lot of long hours and long work days and a lot of hard work coming out of here. And we see it, I've never had not a call, a month that has gone by without a call from someone. And, or any, that are screaming and yelling at me. And it's been awesome. So just so, you know, the, the taxpayers see all of your hard work and see a change at City Hall. And all of you are, I know you're not working eight to five, so we appreciate it. Just want to say thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Did you have something to do with?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have something?
Good enough.
Okay. All right. If we're done, it is seven thirty-five, we will head into executive session, closed session. City Council will meet in closed session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code. In accordance with the authority contained in one, section five five one dot oh seven four, personnel matters, city administration positions. B, section five five one dot oh seven two, deliberations about real property, potential sale of seven 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 clever. And C, section five five one dot oh seven two, deliberations about real property, potential property, lease development, twenty-eight fifty Eva. With that, we will head into executive session. Thank you.
That's soft.
Um.
Well, this is like.
Yeah.
Oh.
Paula's the mix.
Okay. All right, it is eight oh nine and we are back into regular session. Uh, there will be no action taken from executive session, so we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. So we'll move right along back into the regular session. There will be no action taken from executive session so we'll move right along back into open session and closing the agenda out. Is there anything that y'all would like to consider for placements on future agendas? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd make that motion to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Those supposed to say nay? Yes.
She's going to get fired over it.
It's eight oh nine, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah.